I'd like to welcome everyone to your village board meeting of October 27th. Will everyone please rise to the pledge of allegiance and a moment of silence for the victims of Hurricane Ian in Florida? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic over which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Alright, thank you everyone. Alright, before we get started, I just want to introduce the board, starting from my far left, the triumphant return of trustee Graziano. Next to him is trustee Vic Fiorelli, trustee Sue Suriel, deputy mayor Tara Burek, and also joining us on the dais is village clerk Desroye Popin. Before we begin the meeting, I do have a special presentation to make. So at this time, I would like to ask our state senator, a worthy state senator, to head to the podium. Okay.
It's been a long time since I've been at a Woodbury podium.
And we are glad to have you here. So, this job as mayor or being a village trustee is difficult. What makes it easier is when you have partners in government that are there for you from day one. And state senator James Scoofus has been there for this, for me and this board since my administration started. It started with James when he reached out to me in my first week, just to touch base with me how it went, and said, hey, you know, nothing, no buildings collapsed, no fires, nothing like that. So you did good in your first week. But he has always been someone, when we have faced funding needs or questions, he has always been there for us. Just to sort of put that into perspective, he has already obtained for Woodbury, for the village of Woodbury, $430,000 in my 10-month period. He then, which I'm gonna announce tonight, the Woodbury community ambulance is down to their last rig. Their secondary rig is dead. They are now using a loaner rig. So here was our state senator coming to the rescue to provide $150,000 in funding for that rig. So, on behalf of the village board, I'm gonna read what we put together here. It's a quote from Gandhi, "The best way to find yourself is to lose yourself in the service of others. In recognition of a great public servant who has always found a way to put the residents of the village of Woodbury first, with gratitude and grant thanks, we honor your service to our community. Your fair representation and solid ethical values make you one of the best." So, thank you.
This is humbling and really wonderful. I'm just doing my job, and I appreciate the recognition, and more importantly, I appreciate the partnership. I think part of my job as supporting the work that you all do as local elected officials. And I totally understand, especially given constraints of the property tax cap and other issues you have to deal with. You rely on your state representatives to come through when you need them. And so, I'm very happy to play that role. And look, Woodbury is my home. You know, I grew up here, and I care deeply for this community. And so, and I know that you all do as well. You know, you have some of the most thankless jobs in politics, you know, serving on a very local board. And whenever I can, whenever I have an opportunity to work with you all, to help the people that I love here in this town, in this village, I wanna do that. And I wanna continue doing that. So thank you for this recognition, and I look forward to many worthy sort of work together.
Thank you, James. So I know state senator, you have to head off to Waltham. So by all means, I'll see you all soon. Okay, so we come to that moment of the program where we have Bill Cannavaro. You there?
Bill Cannavaro just logged in. Congratulate me.
He's impeccable. So Bill Cannavaro from Hydro Environmental Solutions will give us an update on the well projects. So Bill, the floor is yours.
Great, thank you. Happy Thursday evening, everyone. Happy to say we have nothing but good news to report. So the following is what's been completed. I'm gonna do a quick recap, so everybody's memory is refreshed, and then I'll go into the new stuff. We did a test well, as you all know, TW 11, we did a pumping test. We documented that well's 268 gallons a minute. Sand and gravel well, very good well. We then now, we then moved forward with a second well in the same well field. We call it, we've all labeled it Test Well 12. We ran a step drawdown test, which is pumped the well at five different steps, so to speak. So we did 200 gallons a minute, 300 gallons a minute, 400 and 500. We then plotted on a hydrograph, and we draw some best fit lines, do some math. We figured out the well is gonna be north of 500 gallon a minute well. Just FYI, the well is 85 feet deep with 12 feet of 80 slot stainless steel well screen. Set a pump, the pumping test is gonna end tomorrow, but at present, the well's stable. We're pumping it at 550 gallons a minute. And so, we believe, and we're gonna prove it in our water supply assessment report to the town and the DOH for Orange County and State of New York, that it's a long-term water supply well at 550 gallons a minute. So the two wells to date, just repeat, 268 at TW 11, 550 at TW 12. We're gonna sample the well for all the Part V parameters. When we get the lab results back, we're gonna report, it's all gonna be included in our report. You know, VOCs, volatile organic compounds, the whole gamut. I think most of us in the room have seen it, so I don't need to list them. But the report is probably gonna be out within the next three to four weeks, maybe five, because lab turnarounds are pretty slow. It's likely we're gonna issue it as a draft if the lab takes too long. We'll review it with H2M, the town engineers. Then the next step would be submit the water supply assessment report for this well, TW 12, to the Department of Health in DC, get it approved as a viable water source for the town. Trying to think if there's anything else. The last thing I'll say is, based on what we're seeing at pumping 550 gallons a minute, and we also pumped the two wells, TW 11 and TW 12, simultaneously during the step drawdown test. And then we measured TW 11 to determine interference, and it's minimal interference. I believe we're somewhere in the neighborhood of six to seven feet of interference. So in other words, we turn on TW 12 at 550 gallons a minute, TW 11 only dropped six feet, whatever it is, 400 feet away. So that's really good news. There's a well about eight feet from our pumping well right now that only has about 25 or 30 feet of drawdown. And the other surrounding wells that we've measured in the sand and gravel aquifer there in the well field all show favorable drawdown levels. There's no interference with the stream. So if we, in other words, pump 11 and 12, we don't wanna pull in surface water from trout brook. Not a good thing. Introduces contaminants to the well, we're not seeing that. And we're not seeing any significant offsite impacts. But this is all really good news for the village and the future water supply. And the last thing I think I'll say is that we, I think, as a hydrogeologist and my company thinks, there's probably room for another well out there. We might even be able to augment the village's water supply more than the 550 to 70. That might take some, a little more geology, a little more hydrogeology, some more exploratory drilling, but I think we can figure that out. And I know the board and most people are conscious of budgets. Everything we've done to date, we're on budget for the original proposal that we sent the village in a village board. So that's all good news. I think that's some of the good news. Questions anybody might have.
Well, I'm gonna start with trustee Graziano, since this is like Christmas morning for him. Go ahead, trustee.
No, it's really good news, Bill. If everybody in the audience is watching at home, it's just north of an extra million gallons per day. So you look at our 1.1 million gallon per day augmentations of our supply, which is a good number, and that should get us kind of underway to being where we need to be. The PFAS samples are still coming back high from BFOA?
Well, we're gonna know that. I didn't hear you.
Yeah, repeat everything you just said, Bill, because you dropped that. The PFAS.
Well, I don't have those, so we don't have the results for TW 12, the current well. However, as everybody knows, they were above the current drinking water standard at TW 11. So we're anticipating that it's likely at TW 12, the PFAS will be there, and we're gonna have to treat that water. So the combined treatment system, and I've talked with Natalie and Sean from H2M extensively about this. And they're asking me, like, well, how much do you want us to design for the treatment? So that's the stage we're at, and we'll report the results back. And then H2M will design accordingly. What we did discuss, just so everybody knows, is if we're gonna, if we all reach in agreement, if the consensus says, well, Bill and his group wanna get more water for the village in this well field, and we think it's there, then the treatment may be designed above the, you know, the flow rates we have right now. So that's what's on the table, and we'll have those results, I would say, probably the second week in November, like 14th, 15th of November. And then we can, you know, I'm happy to come to another meeting and report back on what the PFAS and all the results indicate. But that's the direction we're going in.
Yeah, I would suggest that we tell Natalie that we should treat for the well field as one whole treatment system and build the building big enough to expand it for another well in the future. You don't have to put the treatment in at this point, or design that and save, you know, but if and when we do need another well in that well field, you should build that building enough space to add another set of vessels in there if needed to treat the extra field. You know, you can save a little now, but have broker provisions in the future.
Smart. Mickey, do you have anything you wanna add? Mickey Phillips?
Yeah, Chris, I had a meeting with H2M the other day, and we're gonna try to design those filters from anywhere from 1,100 gallons a minute to 1,400 gallons a minute, just in case we get more in the field we're in now, or if we go down to the Mamma Lioni.
It makes sense. Alright, Bill, so we're gonna tentatively schedule you to come back on the 15th.
Okay.
So, and that way hopefully we'll have the water test results then. If we don't...
Four weeks.
Four, yeah, but he's thinking that she's gonna have you back? Yeah.
Yeah, so like 12 to 14. We might have PFAS, not all of it, but we might have PFAS back in 12 to 14 business days from today.
I think a couple of weeks.
Okay. Alright, so you and I will touch base before I reschedule you for another meeting.
Okay.
Because we're only gonna do the, well, we're gonna talk about it tonight, but only the one meeting in November.
Okay, can I just say one last thing, mayor?
Yes, sir.
The group that's out there, the drillers, the DPW group and H2M, it's been really good project working with them. Everybody's doing a great job. I just wanna give everybody a shout out.
Very good. And how's Jay's Deli been to you?
You know what? Actually, I like Taco Express.
Alright, there you go.
I know the Deli, so no disrespect to them. I'll have to try it, but I did like Taco Express, so.
Okay, very good. Alright, Bill, thank you once again for joining us.
My pleasure.
We will be in touch.
Great. Evening, everybody.
Thank you, Bill. Okay, moving right along to public comment on agenda items only. So I will say this, I know the bridge is on the agenda for this evening with secret action. I would ask that if you are here to make comments on the bridge, you just wait until we do public comment, because we do have news to present, and we will do that when the bridge comes up on the agenda. So just be patient, we will get to it. So at this time, do we have anything, a public comment on anything that's currently otherwise on the agenda? Going once.
Only on agenda items?
Yes. Okay. Going once, going twice, moving right along. So can I have a motion and second to accept receipt of the minutes for the meeting held on October 13, 2022? Right, second?
I'll second.
All in favor? Any opposed?
I'm staying in those in here.
There you go. Alright, village clerk Popin, will you please read abstract now?
Okay, abstract nine, page vouchers 220801 through 220153, in total $703,393 in contract.
So can I please have a motion and a second to accept abstract nine as read? Second?
Second.
Seconded by trustee Fiorelli. All in favor?
Aye.
Alright. Our next scheduled meeting, and we're gonna go right into change in the November meeting, is due to be November 10. Now, also in the month of November, our meeting on the 24th is of course Thanksgiving. So what I'm looking to do is to merge the November 10 meeting and the November 24 meeting, and reschedule for November 15. So can I have a motion and a second to reschedule our, to cancel November 10 and 24th meeting and reschedule for November 15 at 7:30 PM?
Motion.
Second.
Let me guess, it's a Tuesday?
Yeah, yeah.
It's a Tuesday. And you're on the spot. Okay, totally fine. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second. All in favor? Any opposed?
I'll go with the group who's...
There you go.
Oh, I already heard you say no.
Boy, that's why I didn't, never assume.
And by the way, just a while... I know some people may be disappointed because we promised that we would dress in costumes tonight. We were planning on coming as Fleetwood Mac, but unfortunately, trustees Fiorelli and Graziano got into a bit of a tiff because each of them wanted to be Stevie Nicks. So we decided to cancel the whole thing. Of course, village clerk Popin did not get the memo.
You said village people, actually.
Yeah.
I was here, you said village people.
Village people, I know. That was even a vigor issue. So anyway, moving right along. Approved change orders, new LED lights, lamps. Okay, recently the board approved the installation of LED lighting in all of its buildings, village-owned buildings. With that work came two change orders. So can I please have a motion and a second to approve change order one, new LED lamps, fixtures, retrofit project totaling $841.90 for additional materials and hardware needed for more rooms added to the proposed, like, all three locations.
Motion.
I know, it was all a little sad.
Change the English on that.
I know. Yeah, no, 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 I was gonna please confirm it anyway. All in favor?
Aye.
Alright. And finally, the second change order is change order two, totaling $2,500 to remove and replace dimmer switches throughout village hall and firehouse downstairs. A motion and a second, please.
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Scheduled public hearing, town common moratorium is cabled once again as the applicant has still not posted the required escrow, so consider that off the table for now. Moving on to new business, introductory local law nine of 2022, that attorney Norton has named towing. There you go. So recently, Lieutenant Phillips of the Woodbury Police Department, no relation to water superintendent Mickey Phillips, had ongoing conversations with village attorney Norton and suggested a few changes to the towing law passed last year. So we are required to actually pass another local law to make those changes. So can I please have a motion and a second to introduce local law nine of 2022, which would amend chapter 283 entitled Towing to provide additional exemptions for requirements for license to tow within the village of Woodbury?
Make motion and second.
Seconded by deputy mayor Burek. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, moving right along. There's no secret action required for this. Can I please have a motion and a second to refer introductory local law nine to the Woodbury Police Department for comment?
Motion.
Second.
Seconded by trustee Burek. I'm not gonna give anything to trustee Fiorelli tonight. No, you can. All in favor?
Aye.
Alright, finally, can I please have a motion and a second to schedule a public hearing to entertain public comment on introductory local law nine of 2022 to be held on November 15 at 7:30 PM?
Motion.
Second. I second, yes, I second. All in favor?
Aye.
Moving right along to the approval proposal, replacement of doors. So the downstairs of doors leaving the firehouse have been an issue for some time. We are in the process of receiving additional quotes based on our procurement policy. So at this time, the site will be cabled to our next meeting. Approval proposal, replace existing domestic water table check backflow preventer. Once again, this has been an ongoing issue for some time. So can I please have a motion and a second to authorize me, the mayor, to sign this proposal from United totaling $10,444 with a replacement of the existing domestic water double check backflow preventer at village hall?
Motion.
Seconded by trustee Burek. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Alright, moving right along to secret action, Ridge Road Bridge repairs. So can I please have a motion and a second to declare the village board as lead agency under CEPR for the Ridge Road Bridge replacement project?
Oh, who are you motioning?
Second. Seconded by trustee Burek. All in favor?
Aye.
Alright. Okay, can I please have a motion and a second to declare the Ridge Road Bridge replacement project as an unlisted action under CEPR and to authorize attorney Norton to circulate the notice of intent as required?
Motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Alright. So here's the second part of that that we talked about prior to the meeting started, or once the meeting had started. So early in the week, I declared the Ridge Road Bridge an emergency for procurement purposes. I signed a letter of intent with the company to bring in to us and install a temporary bridge. With the way this project has gone on and gone on, we thought that the temporary bridge would be the best solution for the time being and get us through the winter and put us back, put that bridge back in service. I have here to share with you that this bridge should be back, this temporary bridge should be up and running by, operational by Thanksgiving, fingers crossed, famous last words. I also wanna thank, I wanna acknowledge the work that highway superintendent Rob Wyon has put into all this and the calls he has, feels it, complaints and otherwise, since day one. And as everybody, anybody who attends my meetings knows that I am legally required to mention how Rob Wyon is the bestest of highway superintendents in all of Orange County. What we are looking to do is permanent bridge structure, once all, the Is have been dotted and the Ts have been crossed with all the government agencies, the permanent bridge structure should be in place, hopefully late spring of 2023. At that time, the bridge will then go back out again, but it shouldn't be so prolonged. I also wanna acknowledge the town's involvement, because we are gonna be sharing the cost until FEMA reimburses us for the cost to put in the temporary bridge. So Rob, do you have anything you wanna add to that? Did I cover everything?
No.
Okay, that's it with the Ridge Road Bridge. So fingers crossed, hopefully by Thanksgiving, we're good to go. Okay, we have an extra item, price lock for electric supply, so I will ask village clerk Popin to read it off.
In our energy resource corporation, which is a village's energy supply company, I reached out regarding the lock-in price for electrical supply, which the current rate expires in November. Current rate your plant paying is 0.05710 per kilowatt hour. The bid's, of course, with everything that's been done, has gone up significantly higher. And the consultant is recommending that we do a 12-month bid with our current supplier Constellation, which is 0.11388, which is double our current rate. She suggests we do it in the 12 months, and if we have something called a, that's extended flex, is what I believe the terminology is, that if the rate drops during that period, we can then commit to the lower rate for another 12 months. I'm just in a motion and I've got the document, the mayor, to sign the contract once she sends it to me before penalty time.
Okay, I'll be there. Alright, so can I please have a motion and a second to authorize me, the mayor, to sign the contract, prepare my M&amp;R energy for the electrical energy supply from Constellation?
Motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
That ends...
Did you say the bridge would be completed by Thanksgiving?
No, the temporary grid will be completed by Thanksgiving.
But it hasn't started. How's that possible?
It's a temporary grid.
Yeah, I think it takes a little bit longer than that. I'm not sure, probably a little after Thanksgiving. But I'm not in a...
I'm just, I'd rather say more, I just think that's a little ambitious.
Because I thought it was gonna take about 40 days to order, and I...
It's being delivered before Thanksgiving.
Alright, but you've already, the bores have already been...
Everything's been done. The bridge is being delivered before Thanksgiving.
Okay, that's good.
And then they have to put in the hoodings and stuff, so probably hoping after Thanksgiving.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, village clerk. I just think that's really ambitious.
I know, that's why I'm like, huge applause. Okay, so we're done with regular village business, and that brings us to public comment. So at this time, and there's absolutely nobody but this one bag in the front row, so I will go to road two. So anyone in road two wishing to speak? You know the routine, Rich.
Rich, Lieutenant General, government, Island of States. With the temporary bridge, is there a weight limit? And if so, will it be posted, go in both ways?
There, we're gonna make the heaviest weight limit we can for all our trucks, because our trucks are obviously, most importantly, go across those bridges for store removal, and it all will be posted.
And it's gonna be too wet?
Correct.
And the second, the timing is perfect. The Highland State Annual Meeting is Monday, December 5th, around. Hopefully the bridge will be done.
Okay.
So we'd like to invite the mayor and the trustees to our meeting Monday, December 5th for an update on that and any other projects.
Thank you, Rich. I think you live in Highland Estates, right?
Oh, you do.
What time is that? What time is the meeting?
What time is the meeting?
What time is your board meeting?
7:00.
7:00 and it's at the...
Community Center in Crest.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, next in row two. Row three, it's you.
Okay, it's good evening, mayor, trustees. And my name is Lencir. I spoke for the last meeting, so thank you for allowing me time to public comment. I just wanted to follow up on a few items that we had socialized last week, one being action steps around stipulation clause that was granted to Rushmore Estates for 2022 and sort of reporting on our progress with reviewing the zoning changes for Rushmore Estates in our occupied B&amp;B that we have submitted. So a couple of options that are critical in order for Rushmore to move forward as 2023 is fast approaching have come to our attention and we wanted to bring it to the board's attention. Time is really of the essence right now as 2022 is closing down. And to the extent we can't look for 2023, we have to come up with options of either to sell, to close, or sort of where we go from here. So I can't say or stress more importantly that that timing is important right now and be any more honest than that. So we have submitted the event zoning proposals and tonight I wanted to give rise that there is some case law that we can point to in Holster County that has the exact same background and circumstances as we have been presenting. Owner occupied B&amp;B and they have been new grants customary use or normal accessory use, where people can go and stay for those weddings that are booked. So while I recognize that we are Orange County, Holster County is sort of aligned, I think, from a geographical, size, shape, culture with Orange County. So I wanted to give rise to that and if we could get a meeting and we could kind of talk about where we are, we can provide additional color and context around that case law. And plan B could always be amending the special permit that's in effect now and allowing the same use that's been in 2022. I just wanted to wait for them to finish speaking, sorry. Allowing the same use to 2023 that is happening in 2022. 2022 events have run very smoothly and we have as a team collected some data points around safety. It happens to be an issue that's out of mind. It should be, absolutely. So we do have some data points around fire and access to things of that sort. And in terms of setting precedent, mayor, I know that you specifically addressed that being of major concern. And so I think what I'd like to highlight this evening is that Rushmore is a historical site. And there's only, I believe, two other, I would say organizations or properties that fall under that same bucket of historical in the town or the village. And those are Neiman and Neiman Estates, and I apologize for pronouncing it, and Cornell Estates. So I think from a precedent perspective, if we were to look at zoning changes and moving this process properly forward and swiftly, we could put in clauses around historical and kind of bypass the setting of precedent. I think we stand out as a very different and unique property. And again, we want to help you guys, you guys, not proper English, but we want to help the village do this, do this right. I have left a couple of messages for a meeting. I haven't gotten a response. So mayor, I would implore you to please, you know, let me know what your schedule looks like so we could sit down and maybe talk about specifics. We also sent some formal requests in to discuss this further with the GBA, with the board, with the trustees, council, town council, where more appropriate. I know it's a responsibility for you to respond to us, but I do believe in my heart that this is a really good thing. And we want good for the county and we want economic development. So I guess my question to the board is where do we go from here? Where do we stand? Do we have a status? Can you share your perspectives?
No, I'll mention it.
So is that you just don't, you can't answer now? This is only for public comment? Is that how it works?
Yes.
I don't know that.
Yeah, it's on the agenda.
Okay, so I will respectfully request again to be included in the agenda as this is my second request verbally and have had several now sought copy requests. So thank you. Thank you for your time.
One, two, three, three. Third row, anyone else in the third row?
So in an effort not to ramble on...
Let me stop you there. Stop it, tell them your name.
Oh, my name is Beth Erickson. Erickson, is that, Erickson?
There you go. Now, the floor is yours.
So again, in an effort not to ramble on, I actually wrote a little thing. My family and I moved to New York from Virginia in 2001. Our friend offered her second home to us to live in while we searched for a house to buy. The home was quite unusual as it was actually a dairy barn that had formerly belonged to a large estate. It was rather in the middle of nowhere and we didn't even have a home address. Leading up to the dairy barn was a dirt road which we shared with the mansion that the dairy barn had formerly belonged to. The mansion sat majestically high on a hill, luminosous, stoic and aloof. There were no other houses around, just us and the mansion. And oh, how we desired to go through those iron gates, drive up the curved drive lined with period light posts and satisfy our curiosity surrounding this beautiful, mysterious mansion. If you haven't guessed by now, I'm talking about Rushmore Estate. Rushmore Estate during the beginning stages of what we now know as Brigadoon. My family and I ended up moving to Warwick where we raised our three children. Fast forward about 15 years when my son, who is now an award-winning short film producer, was in search for a location for a film shoot and remembered the beautiful mansion which was so forbidden to him in his childhood. He contacted the owner Seth Poulter, who was so welcoming, kind and enthusiastic about Rushmore being a location for a short film shoot, even by a producer still wet behind the ears when he offered my son the beautiful ballroom for his films. I cannot tell you how excited we were to be invited to Rushmore after all those years and it did not disappoint. The ballroom and the guest rooms were everything we imagined they were. The peace and beauty and history were truly magical. To date, my son has shot two of his short films at Rushmore. This is when and how my son and I met Russell Cohen, Seth's friend who helped him develop the idea of offering the estate as a bed and breakfast. I introduced myself as a professional who had many years of hospitality and event planning experience and that when the time was right for them, would love to assist them in developing the business. Fast forward several more years, it's 2020 and the mansion has been operating as B&amp;B for a couple of years and they are excited to spread their wings and start offering events and weddings. It was at this time that Russell reaches out to me for assistance in this endeavor and I gladly and wholeheartedly accept. I actually end, I actually end up leaving my seven-year employment at Glenmore Mansion to join the staff at Rushmore and to focus on the weddings and the future of Rushmore Estate. Currently, I am the wedding planner for more than half the weddings at Rushmore. We have a professional, experienced and well-trained team in place to greet and serve our guests which travel to Rushmore from all over the world. I would never have imagined 20 years ago that to enter my place of employment, I would actually be entering through those iron gates and driving up the curved drive lined with period light posts. I can tell you it's an honor to work there. It is such an honor when couples choose Rushmore Estate to be their wedding venue. It is such a joy to see the faces of our guests when they enter the property. Such a joy to serve our brides in this most beautiful and historic place. They will remember Rushmore for the rest of their lives. Every time they see their photos, they will remember their experience at Rushmore. Wedding photos are not the ones that get lost or pushed aside. They adorn mantles and walls and dressers and preventuses. Family and friends love to display wedding photos because of course everyone looks their best. And there is no better backdrop than Rushmore. Rushmore at this time in its existence is in the proper hands, hands of where it should be, hands that wanted to open it and share it with the world as it was meant to be. Rushmore, even in its beginning, was not meant just for one man. Even Charles Rushmore expanded and added a ballroom and four additional bedrooms because he wanted to share it. It was built to share. It was built to entertain. It is a community gem that should be allowed to shine as it always and inherently was meant to. It's something I would like to just encourage a partner in government with Rushmore and the county of Woodbury.
Thank you. Anyone else in row three? Or four?
I know who you are. Good evening. My name is Karen Frye and I've lived in Monroe, Woodbury for over 35 years and I'm currently one of the event coordinators for Rushmore Estate and a host for the Bed and Breakfast. I've raised my three children in our home right down the road from Rushmore Estate in beautiful Central Valley. One of my sons recently got engaged and would love nothing more than to have his wedding at Rushmore in the hometown that he grew up in. This opportunity should be open to all of the young people who grew up here and want to stay here and be a part of this community. Besides weddings, Seth is offering this stunning mansion, ballroom and pristine grounds to host many other functions and milestone events for our community such as bridal showers, baby showers, bar mitzvahs, christenings, as well as any and all charity events. Seth is an avid believer in giving back to the community. He supports multiple charity events and loves hosting these events at Rushmore. His seniors of Woodbury, Monroe Woodbury Sports Team, Shabba, Mothers of West Point and the Highland Mills Food Mantry, just to name a few. We're so fortunate to have this one-of-a-kind historical mansion, bed and breakfast and venue available to all of us right in our hometown. Please move forward with approving the permits that are needed so that we may continue generating business opportunities for local businesses and create a win-win opportunity for all of our teams. Thank you.
Anyone else in row four? Yeah, you're five.
Hello, everybody. I'm Seth Poulter, I'm the owner of Rushmore. And I figured I guess I would make one final plea to the village. As you know, I've been after these approvals for almost a decade and it's been taking different paths or different iterations. And recently, as you know, I thought I had green light to go ahead and do what I was doing and it turns out that that wasn't true. So at this point, next year, next season is the prospect of the matter now. If I am not allowed to operate for 2023, I don't think I'm going to be able to stay in the house there. So all this time, I've been patiently going through the right channels and I've been polled by several people several times that Friday, you're going to hear something positive. You know, we want to take care of this, it is a good thing for the community and it just never seemed to come. The house is an exorbitant venture. Every month that I'm stalled up and held up costs tens of thousands of dollars and I'm coming to the end of my path there. As I've explained before, being disabled and not doing dentistry anymore, if the house cannot produce an income, I'm going to have to sell it, which I have come to accept maybe the fate. And if that's so, that's okay, but I need to know something definitive. And then what we are proposing legally can be done. We have three or four different ways that it can be done. So legally, it's not an issue of it not being able to be done. It's really just a matter of if you want it to be done. So right now, the fate of that parcel, my future, the surrounding parcels, other parcels I own in town, it's all unprecedented right now. So I'm hoping that we can find some way to allow me to operate 2023 because those bookings are being taken now and I'm hoping, as I always have, that we will be able to work something out long-term somehow to do it the right way. But at this point, it's all about next year. If I'm not allowed to find where we operate next year, so do it. We may go. Thank you.
Anyone else in row five? Anyone else in row five? Anyone? Row six? Okay, anyone standing up? Anyone sitting down in the back? Doesn't matter who goes, who's first.
Good evening, Andrea Hunter. Village town resident for 43 years. Very active in this community. My husband has been in this town for, since the 1800s. My family has grown up here and we love this place where we live. I can't comment on some things tonight because we have a business in town. We've kind of been threatened about our business. So I can't make any comments tonight because I have a business to protect. I live in this town. I donate in this town. I volunteer in this town as my whole entire family has done since the 1800s. Enough of that now. I am a member of the Woodbury Chamber. I want everyone to be aware, Halloween night, which is October 31st, which is on a Monday, we'll be hosting the local trunk-a-treat Central Valley Elementary parking lot. The one that's across the street from the big stores across the street. That's the school where we're going to be at. Not Smith Close, not the middle school, Central Valley Elementary.
May no shine.
May no shine. We're going to start setting up at 4:30. Trunk-a-treat starts from 6 to 8. We invite all residents, children, adults, come in your costumes. Anyone who wants to put a trunk up and decorate it, please come and do so. Everyone is invited to participate. We do ask that politicians are welcome to have their trunks decorated, hand out candy. We will not have any politicians walking through the school or handing out any political advertisement being that the election is the following week. So thank you and have a good evening and not this morning.
You've been having your business threatened with this or nothing else?
Verbally spoken to. You have a business in town, watch what you say. I'm done. I've done a lot for this town, village, whatever you want to call it. An EMT for 17 years, my husband's on the fire department. My in-laws' family started the ambulance corps and the fire department. Everyone in this town and village has volunteered and given their blood, sweat and tears. No one is above the law and we're all the same in my eyes. Thank you.
Anyone else in the?
My name is Mayor Okauski. This is strictly unexpected of me, and it's not scripted down. But I have to say that I don't understand how you people in this town are watching two businesses struggle and not even putting out a hand, not a phone call, not a text message. How unhuman can we possibly be to see two people begging for their livelihood? I just don't understand. We all have a job. We all need a job. We all need to work. We all have bills. These people, to me, are coming to you on their hands and knees. And it looks terrible. It really looks bad.
Anyone else?
I'll say one more.
Go ahead. I'll make it quick. George.
Also, I'm a resident and a former employee. I guess basically what I want to say is that, to me, the core issue is that Rushmore was granted its permits previous building inspector. From that moment, a wave started, a motion started. People were hired from all over the county. People left their jobs to come work at Rushmore. Money was spent to build the brand, to build the name on marketing. I'm watching it from the inside. It's a giant business. And to watch that land be procured and taken care of, it takes a village, and it takes finances that, you know, I can't wrap my head around. So those approvals that were granted to Rushmore started everything. It started, it changed people's lives. Look, listen to the story of someone growing up here and now they're working here. It's a beautiful story. The story can continue or the story can end. It's that simple. I mean, and it seems to me that we're fighting against you where we should be partnering. We shouldn't be against each other. We should be holding hands and joining as a team to make this happen. Why does it feel like there's some defensive thing going on here? You know, so I just feel like this story continues on what you guys decide. And we're not asking for a cure. We're not asking to change the wheel. We're not asking to do what other municipalities have not done everywhere, all over the country. We're asking for you to find a way to make something that is for the most good, for the most people in this community to continue. Because if it doesn't, it will simply go into hands who don't care about the land. They will not care about the buildings. No one will care about it the way it's being cared for now. And the buildings will be changed, and the land will be changed. So, you know, we just feel like we would love to find a way to unite as a community to make this business move forward and grant him the permits so he can keep the property. It's that simple. It's that simple for me. So I appreciate your time and your consideration.
I'm in attorney's, so I can't tell you it's that simple. There are things that can be done.
That's my turn.
So we were here two weeks ago. Right after that meeting, I sent an email that I had sent in proposing a zoning scheme that would be based upon your existing code. Would follow the golf course zoning, which is the only place where I understand you could have a wedding now. And it is basically as I got one that gives you control over the process. So that's a long-term solution. As Seth said, there is a short-term issue. The wedding season for 2023 starts now. Has started actually. And you can give approval for a wedding venue next year. But it won't help with weddings that should be kept in place that are in 2023. So there's a need for a short-term solution. There are three ways that that might work out. One is to look at the possibility of amending the existing bed and breakfast permit. They have a special permit that's allowed use, as one of the previous speakers indicated, that I mentioned at the last meeting. There is, there are zoning cases, at least one zoning case in Ulster County, which did find a bed and breakfast as an accessory-use wedding. Where I think we ran into trouble with the building inspector was we went beyond that. We offered the venue for events, and some of those, many of those events turned out to not profit. So even though it was not something that was earning any revenue, it was an event, and it became a problem because that went beyond the accessory use that would be allowed with the bed and breakfast. So we can modify the bed and breakfast permit to allow weddings that take place to be restricted to the people who attend. It would be restricted to guests of the bed and breakfast. And that's one option. The other option would be to basically extend the agreement that we had in 2022 to allow the events to take place on a list and keep it to the same number of events that you allowed in 2022. As far as we know, those comes no problem, no nuisance, no complaints. It's another way to proceed. The third option is to start the process of working forward with zoning and allow events to take place in anticipation of that happening. The short-term issue again is the building, actually was an email from your attorney indicating that you had some awareness of marketing activities for 2023. As far as Seth knows, he doesn't have any active marketing campaigns. But it raises the issue because it was on line of that message is if an event is taking place, it's going to be enforcement action. So it creates an issue for us. We can conduct the activities with notice of the need to obtain college approvals, but Neat gave will do something. So right now, with respect to the zoning, what the situation is is in July, we have a letter from your attorney saying you have no interest in proceeding. So we need to know if that is still the case of the board is interested in entertaining the zoning. We understand it has to go through a process. Action has to be taken. We'll have public hearing. We'll need determination once you hear. But if you're not going to go with that, we really don't have an option for 2023. And the fourth option is to close it down, and Seth has to move out. That's where we are. That's what we need. And I hope you can give us some guidance tonight on your intentions.
Thank you, Seth. Anyone virtually? Who's need to speak?
I have one.
Oh, you, no, wait, we got one more.
John Keller, Highland Mills. I got something totally off track. And I don't want to take it away from Rushmore Estate. That is a very important topic. My issue, and it just popped in my head today, was the low bridges. There are three railroad bridges in this village. Estrada Road, Smith Close Road, and Pine Hill Road. And the reason it popped in my head was I was coming down Smith Close Road today, and twice within an hour, there were three tractor trailers on Smith Close Road doing a U-turn at her own circle. One tractor trailer was on the curve and within inches of your sport apparel trying to turn around. I just shook my head and I said, "This has got to stop." This is a daily occurrence. Now, I know Smith Close Road is a county road, so that becomes number one issue. It doesn't become a village problem. Correct, Rob?
Well, it's actually an NPA problem.
It's an NPA problem?
Because it's, all the railroad bridges are nearby.
Okay. What I'm asking is what do we have to do? And can you start it? Can the village start it? Or you get involved, Mr. Mayor? They do it now in Westchester County on all the parkways. What do we need to do to get signage up on Thirty-two and on all these roads to stop these tractor trailers from going down Smith Close, from going up Pine Hill? Because what they do is they come over Pine Hill, they get to that railroad bridge, and then they have to back all the way up and come back over. They've already hit the bridges a number of times. What have we got to do to stop that from happening? And how do we get signage on Thirty-two end? Because I know they don't use commercial GPS. I used to drive a truck. I used a commercial GPS. I wouldn't go down those roads. What they're doing is using their phones, and this doesn't tell you where the low bridges are. It's great. I backtracked the trailers out from my side of Smith Close Road and all the way up to By the Greens or whatever the roads are up there and gotten them turned around or gotten turned around by the roofing company there.
Steven.
There's no room. We got to address this and address it soon because it's going to be a big problem. And I'm asking you, I'm asking Rob, what do we need to do? Who do we, you know? And today of all, the railroad guys are standing right there on top of the bridge watching this happen. I'm like, tractor trailer hits the bridge, and they're just going to go, "Hup!" So can we address it again at all?
Yeah, I know there are signs on the road already. I'll take pictures of them tomorrow when I get into work. I'm not responsible for putting up those signs. NTA is responsible for putting up all the signs for their underpasses. I know they re-marked them, they rebranded them last year. I'll have to just check Smith Close Road and make sure that is the one that's still up by the church, I believe, there was one.
You mean up by the church.
I understand that.
Or they're making the right currents.
I understand that. But if they're not paying attention to the one on that Smith Close, do you think they're going to pay attention to the one up there to do, honestly?
I don't think so. I don't think so either.
But I will reach out to, I'll reach out to NTA tomorrow. I have an email. Hello?
We can try. Yeah. All right. That's a good job. That's really, we can try, but.
Yeah, legislate duty for instance.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I have, yes.
May I comment?
Yep.
Sorry, I can do again, just five minutes, one's here. I do not want this to get contentious at all. But I need to now understand why there has been dialogue back and forth with you, sir, and you on a public comment. But when I asked a simple question of can we schedule a meeting to move this topic forward, I was told that I'm not allowed to do that. And I honestly, Mr. Braziano, did not know if that was permitted. But clearly, on record, you just had a conversation about a public comment issue. So now you need to explain that to me.
Did we really answer his question just now? Or we said we were going to handle?
You engaged in conversation.
Did we say we were going to handle?
Okay, well, engage in conversation. We want to table this to November seventh fifteenth to allow everybody on the board an opportunity to review all the comments received so that we can properly address all the comments and really sample.
Okay, so you have acknowledged that you've got comments and that you've gotten written documentation?
Yes.
Okay. But you did engage. You did come up with a solution.
I didn't want them to do it.
Yeah, yeah. I know.
He gets to ask questions, and if he doesn't answer, he doesn't.
I was just reading some reports. That's a lot, yeah.
It doesn't, it doesn't, we don't want to speak consensus.
Yeah, it's not my point. It's just, we all have to be accountable, right? We're the government here. We're the taxpayers. So we all need to be accountable. When someone asks for a yes, the answer should be yes, to be happy.
To clarify, we all live here as well. And we don't like seeing this. We don't like Mary's comments. I don't want to feel included. And I will address every comment that we make.
It does matter. Do you love? It does matter.
What does it have?
Okay, yes, it does matter. And when it doesn't matter, then I don't.
I didn't say I do that.
Oh, I didn't say you didn't. I said I live here.
He's asking me.
I'm sorry. I was talking over someone.
Let's get back on track. Right, you've gotten an answer now.
What is my answer? So it's.
No, the fifteen minute.
November fifteenth, I will put it on the agenda for public discussion.
Wonderful.
And then we can do this, and we will have.
Absolutely. That's exactly what I wanted. If it's on the agenda, I am a happy person.
I could have said sooner. I need to create and come back to the podium. I do.
Thank you. It's on the agenda.
Go ahead, David.
Just to add one to the bridge situation. Baker Town Road was a nightmare to begin with. With the bridge being closed, it's a bigger nightmare. The eighth road, which was a turnoff, you know, a slight detour, that's been closed because of all the construction taking place there. So now we have, in addition to a fifteen-minute addition to getting out of Highland Mills and the areas back there, in this time when gas prices are rising, it's an emergency nightmare. It's an emergency nightmare for a fire to get into those houses. All the houses are stick-built, so if it's going to take them that long to get there, right? Disaster. Ambulances, same thing. So in working on getting to that temporary bridge, I'm asking that we, the team here, do your best to push this through and not let it flounder, not let it drag on longer than it has, right, when we have a real disaster.
Thank you, David.
My name is Jimmy Gang, and I'm just a big guy, okay? I saw Paul on your show, Phil, Seth. I've been here for a moment. I don't, I don't know this community, my family, but I mean my whole family of people. I see so many people invested in this. You know, they work here, they got family here. This man is putting this shit. He's part of the community. If he sells, and because you don't allow him to do this, we all know somebody's going to buy that land. Somebody's going to do, there's going to be a development, there's going to be this. And I'm sorry. You see signs of it where I see the leftover mailboxes on garbage on the lawn. It's a different feel. Okay, I got the people in this, in this room. He cares about the bridges. I mean, the people care about what's going on for this community. Some groups don't. They're basically parasites where, you know what? They'll be here hands out when sort of they're finished. Okay? Next, you know what? There's going to be another fire this year, next year, whatever. That man's going to step up. There's going to be a little thunder. That man's going to step up. These people that work for him are going to step up. And I just don't understand it. We live in the gritty doom, okay? I'm going to head the ridge. I'm the biggest housingist in that area, in that community, as I've said. And as far as city president, if also I told you, "Hey, guys, I want to do a bread breakfast," you'd go away because it's not set up like that. I want to hold events. It's not set up like that. I have a parking lot in front of my house. If you drive by, it's, it's, my house is majestic. I take pride in my house. But I, and not in his position. He is all-bought, that is Rushmore Estates. I can't come across this in any states because it doesn't work that way. So he has, person has been set historically to allow him to be the bed and breakfast, to make that investment. But also, wait, hold on, stop. But also, wait, hold, hold on, stop. Let's hold here and help him fail by not allowing him to take the next step. Okay? And you're gonna put it on agenda, it's gonna be a manhouse, I'll be here, but.
Why, why is it gonna be a manhouse?
It's gonna be a manhouse.
Why is it gonna be a manhouse?
Everyone's, everyone's in a one.
It doesn't need to be a manhouse.
I don't think there are.
But I'm just saying.
Okay, 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 okay. Go ahead, Jimmy, I'm sorry, I apologize.
I'm, I'm just saying, here, it's a smaller group, we're more controlled. Bitch, I know you live there. You see it. This man is one of us. Him, being there makes us the brigadoodle, makes us the community. Whether you wanna say Woodbury, whatever, whatever you wanna call it, but at least he's part of the family. I just don't understand, I mean, I got, there's a lot of manpower in here trying to figure out ways of doing this. But there's just not the, you know, the agreement to let him do it. Basically, if you don't allow him to do it, what are you gonna wind up with? Someone's gonna take it over. You may wind up with this, I, I don't have the natty tales. Seventh Springs, this new village they wanna incorporate down in Monroe, we don't want that. Okay? We don't want it with much people that don't care about raising families, okay? You know, with the church streets. They're not, they're not gonna care about this stuff. I don't wanna be in that, I don't wanna be in that village, that town where that happens. Every two weeks, these people come in. They plead. And you see, Seth, you're not a puppy, sweetie. You're a great human, but you're not a puppy. But you come up here and you lay it out there. The only thing he has not done is he has not got on his knees to beg and plead. And that's wrong. It is, it, it is wrong. I just don't understand. There has to be a way of making this work. Okay? It, it, it really is. If, if my brother, my sister, my son, my daughter came to me, they wanted something and it would sound reasonable, I would find a way to make it work because that's family. Well, Seth is family. This whole business is family, Rushmore State is part of the family. If you deny this for whatever reason, we're gonna lose Rushmore State. And we said, and one by one, the families leave. Another two, I think since the last village meeting, another two homes put up for sale in Brigadoodle. Why? Because we're flourishing, it, 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 it's a bad time to sell, it's the winter, the rates are up, it's on and on and on, but people are running. Let's go up and down 32, these big ass beautiful retail spots are vacant. Whatever. You lose him, who else is gonna get affected? How many people have to find new jobs? How many businesses are closing now? At this point, it's just wrong. Okay? You know, we'll all be here, you know, we're trying to support each other. You know, I understand your positions as officials, but you almost have to find a way of making it work. The whole setup, go up there, walk through, walk through, you know, right? Seth, can he go through? Can he see it? They drive up Cassington, you'll see, he's there. Wow. You know what? He is as much a reason to visit this area as Woodbury Commons, the Winerys, the Fortunes. But he needs a little help. And I, it's just like, you know, how, how much longer do you wanna drag this out? Because you know, yes, the bills are gonna, you know, they rise, you can't avoid, this just makes sense. I mean, if Seth won't beg, I'll beg. Because if Seth sells, I won't be in a boat because I have to sell too. Because I don't wanna see what happens to Rushmore State. Getting a parcel of redevelopment. I see you here, I remember you, you fought the dumpster park.
Yep.
And that was great. You got a group of people who got something done. And you stopped a major corporation. Why can't you get this done? I mean, is, is there something we don't know? It, it, it just seems like something's wrong here. This man, everyone at worst, you know? Forget about the families and the events and everything else. These people are family, that's really what it's about. I dragged my family here. I moved my mom out of her house to be with my family. I got welcomed from the Brigadoodle, people were dropping off, they didn't know me. No one, people dropping off things at the door, it's not nice, you should know. The welcome to the neighborhood. I don't wanna be in this neighborhood. I mean, you know, thank you for putting it on the agenda. But I just, I just don't understand what, you know, why, you know, why this has got turned out so wrong? Because this is an emergency situation, switch, eh, emergency situation, it's the same way. Bridges and everything else is. Him shutting down is gonna kill the Brigadoodle. Okay? And you know what? You think, you think people are going from Brigadoodle out? We're just, we're just shut. Thank you.
That's a hard act to follow, but I have a very simple request. If it's gonna be on the agenda, I assume, but I do want to ask that you would offer us your attorney to be prepared to provide you with any necessary guidance and field to go forward with. Lozogia.
George, of course I would be prepared.
He gets paid by the word, he speaks. So George had to back up there.
If I'm paid by the word, I'd have a couple more.
Got a copy of Leo Tolstoy's War Beast, if you'd like. All right, any other, any other comments from public? Rich? Rich, you don't get paid by the word.
I like to offer my services as far as the bridge. In addition to being on a planning board, you probably don't know, I'm on the MTA Metro North Committee, so I have connection.
So Rich, Rich, what about, what about the railroad? Where's the railroad, I'm sorry, Rich. Rich, where do we go with the, where do we go with the railroad side? For the, where do we go with the low bridge side? Because you're talking about the Ridge Road Bridge, right?
No, I'm talking about the railroad bridges.
Oh, and we're all good, Rich. There you go.
I'll work with him, I have connection to the president, everybody.
President, really?
Which president are we talking about?
I am not.
Ah, the MTA.
MTAs.
I know, I know. Rich, Rich, what?
I work for them.
Thank, thank you, Rich. Okay. Okay, moving right along. Actually, anybody who is joining us virtually, which is to speak, that's not at the parking head. Speak now, grab a hold your piece. Okay? With no further public comments, I will go out to the department heads for the walking comments, starting with Mike Penella.
Good evening, all, I have no comment tonight. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Michael. Chief Burke.
Hello, everybody, I do not have any comments tonight.
Thank you, sir. Mickey Phillips for the trifecta.
I'm all good, thank you.
And right to Rob Williams.
I think I said enough.
There you go. Village Court Hoppen.
Yeah. So I just wanna add on to what Maria said about Trump Retreat. We have about 12 or 13 trunks already signed up, so that's a lot of candy. Like she said, anyone who wants to bring a trunk, please do. Even if you didn't sign up ahead of time, we'll make space for you. Plan on about six to eight hundred pieces of candy to hand out. We have a DJ planned, who will be playing during the night. There'll be a food truck there for the parents who wanna eat while the kids are running around. We do make sure it's safe so there's no cross-traffic, so everyone will be protected during that event. Also wanna remind everybody that there is a curfew in Woodbury during October 30th and 31st. No one under the age of 18 shall be allowed to remain idle, wander, stroll, or play at any public place, either on foot or through the bout without a set destination in a vehicle any between the hours of 8:00 PM and 6:00 AM. I'm sure everyone who's lived here long enough, or if you're new, you'll see the police are out patrolling on those particular days quite heavily. And in case you also didn't know, there will be a public vote on November 7th? 8th, 8th, of course it's November 8th. It's the first, I got a lot, I got a lot of phone calls this week about why isn't it November 1st? Because it's usually the first Tuesday in November. But the law is, it's the first Tuesday in November after the first Monday. I do. I do, it's kind of amazing, just like I got calls of what is Trump Retreat? Because the sign says Halloween night. And I have to say October 31st, so, rain or shine. So remember, you vote, election day, the early voting starts soon. And that's all.
All right. Small, uh, board comments, starting with trustee Graziano.
All right, I got a couple things to mark. Well, make sure you vote, please, everyone. It's the best and most important thing you can possibly do and the best right we have as people is to vote. We wanna make a difference and we wanna be the change, vote. Doesn't matter who you support, and I've said it a lot, I don't, it's a point in my life, I learned a few lessons, and one of them is I don't care what letters after your name. I'm voting for you, you're the best person, I'm up to the job, I don't care. About putting party over people, doesn't matter what, letters after my name either. I wanna thank Senator Scoop, because I'm, I'm supporting him in this election this year, absolutely 100%. He's done a hell of a lot for us in Woodbury and getting us hundreds and hundreds of thousands of dollars in rents that of all set taxpayer needs in this village. And that's just, the help is a miracle of all work we have to do. Between bridges, between water, between everything else that we have on our plate. That help has been outstanding. Second thing is, and I, I understand frustrations with certain things, and how they take a long time, believe me, that was one of my big, still one of my biggest pet peeves about working in government, is it is slow. And, you know, I owe Desiree an apology, I told her that earlier today, because when I first came in at this job, I'm used to being in private business, I see that podium broken, I walk over, I fix the podium. That's how private works. Government doesn't work that way. Government works, a podium's broken, okay, now you're gonna go down to the Palisades Mall at night and come back before you can fix the podium. But you can't take the car, you have to walk. And sometimes the red tape is so big, they break your leg before you walk, so you have to go do it on crutches. That's government, which is very frustrating, it's very wrong. And I came in like a house of fire, and I do all the apologies, because that was really pushing me. And I was aiming at this thing, trying to get things done fast. It doesn't work that way, and I'm starting to learn that. I'm trying to short-circuit the best I can, you know, I may have to walk to the, walk down to the Palisades Mall, but maybe I can get an eye complaint instead of a crush. So I'm still trying to shorten things up and get them done as fast as possible. And like, we're really working with the engineers and the water people to try and do that and push things through, which is painfully slow. I acknowledge that, and it's just, unfortunately, the way New York State is set up is every time you think you got somewhere, there's a big red tape in front of you, you have to go around that one now. And then there's another one put up in front of you, then you have to go around that one. It's, it gets frustrating after a while, for us as well as it does for the people in the audience. So, we are trying to get the bridge done as fast as possible. Probably about 17 state agencies have jumped in on the bridge in the D E C to complain about waterways, complain about fish breeding, eggs, you name it, it's come up. Every time something else happens, they throw another roadblock in the way, no fun intended on that one. I know Rob and the team and everybody have been trying to get this thing addressed as fast as possible. I think we have a full solution now going forward. I live there, I, I understand the frustration, I live in Atlantic States, and I, I get it, but I also get that it's, you know, I kind of timed it myself and clocked it myself, and it's literally a mile difference to go down Red Road than it is going to Red Road. So it's actually a mile out of my life. So I've kind of learned to, you know, live with it a little bit, and my guilt and everything, so. But I'm looking forward to getting that done as quick as possible. So, other than that, I thank everybody coming out and showing your interest tonight. This is whether you agree, you don't agree, whether we agree or don't agree. This is what government should be. Participation by people and hearing what they have to say. And we, as, as a group, have to make our decisions. And we make those decisions based on law, and based on code, and based on a lot of other things. But you guys participating in the process, I wish this was at every meeting. Regardless if I agree with it or not agree with it, it's, it's irrelevant at this point. It's just that this, this level of participation is for everything we do in this world. Because there's so many important things that belong here that nobody shows up to meetings for those really important things, you know? We were this close to running out of water, and we've had these issues going on for months now, and no one showed up for those meetings. But that's something that's very important, you run out of water, it doesn't matter who, when, where, or wants to sell what, it doesn't matter if there's no water. Can't do anything then, at that point. So there's things that are much, really much important that we should be taking stock on, and coming out and supporting, not supporting, saying your piece. And I will say this, I respect everyone's opinion, again, whether I agree, disagree, or whatever. I will respect and I will hear everyone's opinion. But at the end of the day, my entire being runs on what is the law and what is not the law, and that's how I live with things. It's that black man. So, that's all I have to say, thank you for coming out, keep participating in the process.
Trustee Correll.
Thank you. Again, I wanna thank everybody for coming out tonight, either in person or online. I wanna thank you all for the comments again. I take the comments very serious as well. I am looking forward to the public hearing on November 15th. And that's really all I have to say at this time.
You make up your name.
What? My makeup's really bad. I'm sure. Next one will be different.
Trustee Sirianni.
Thank you, everybody. I really love hearing my answer. I wanna say everybody go out and vote. It's a local election. And if you're a voter, just get out there and vote, it's important. It's, sometimes upsets me how few people go out and vote. And remember, Halloween is a half-day of school here in the district. So we have a lot of kids out on the street. Reduce your speed, tell your teens to slow down. I have, mine are gonna get the speech. And remember, when you have teens at the door, like my 15-year-old will be there with a bunch of his friends, they're just there for the thrill of the hunt. And they come back and they trade their candy and they have a great time, so nobody's too old to try it. That's it, that's it. We should come trick or treating here today.
All right, the B A of yours.
Thank you, thank you again, everyone for coming out. To address you, then, I don't know how you wanna be dressed. I don't want this to be contentious, I don't think anybody does want this to be contentious. I know, or I can speak for myself, but I know these, these people up here pretty well. Every comment is taken to heart. Every, every piece of paper I've ever read, and oh boy, how I read. This is my Seth Culver file, Mr. Culver. You're a permanent fixture at my house. Because if you like, as I mentioned at the last meeting, I do like to understand everything that is presented before me before making a decision. I take comments, we got a bunch of emails and letters in the mail this week. We can talk about this in the next meeting, but just please understand. And I did say this to a few of you after the last meeting that reached out and thanked us for listening and, and for having an open mind. Nothing has been taken lightly, nothing has been a rash decision. Nothing has been taken on its surface, because there is a lot of history of the property. And a lot of history of Mr. Culver and different approvals he has tried to get over the years. And I think that's very important to understand as it relates to this process today. And I, I just want you all to know that this is not a light decision, and I know it seems like it's been going on for a very long time. There are many considerations here, which we will get into, and we can, I'm, I'll stop there because I can go on and on about this. Mr. Culver, I, I don't want you to think that we're not hearing you and feeling everything that you said. Mary, same for you. I think you speak, if she's still here. I know you speak from the heart, and I know, I know, and you're passionate, and I do appreciate it. And even if it does work to hear what you said, I appreciate what you said because it's, it's honest. So, with that, I'm going to stop speaking. Going to, yes, keep it brief, and just again, thank you, I appreciate your comments, and I look forward to speaking more in depth, yes, ma'am. Go ahead.
Yeah, thank, thank you, I just wanted to respond that, thank you, I appreciate that, and having the dialogue and transparency helps a bit.
It helps a lot, I think it's what we are.
I would just like to respect. I would just like to respectfully request that we, we move swiftly. Regardless of which way we go as a team, I think twenty-twenty-three is fast approaching. And just to respond to Mr. Graziano, you asked me a specific question, if I lived here. And you said, do you even live here? So was that a question? And I think the answer is, I'm a Monroe-Woodbury resident, but I am allowed to publicly speak. I live in Monroe and have had an enormous amount of experience with, let's just say, land and land use and preserving and things of that sort. So that's one of the reasons I'm here. In addition, I'm trying to build a twenty-twenty-three event, and I've been unsuccessful in it using twenty-thousand-dollar event for the Children's Cancer Fund at Maria Ferrara's Hospital. So that's the second reason that I'm here speaking. And lastly, I've worked very closely with the village of Monroe's mayor in terms of zoning changes, as a result of in retail space. The laws haven't been changed since like nineteen thirty-something, and it was a real painful process, so I have a little bit of insight. So to answer your question, Mr. Graziano, no, I do not live here, but there are reasons why I'm here on behalf of the Water Room. So I just wanted to make that clear. Thank you.
I knew you lived in, I thought you were talking to me, I know where you live.
As I was speaking...
I, I, so I was talking over the two of you.
That I could respond to it timely.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So I'll end here, and thank you all very much for your patience, and to you, Lynn, we will move swiftly. I don't think anybody wants to drag me on and on.
But you want us here to be?
I actually do like your comment, believe it or not. It doesn't matter how, what you're saying, you're always very thoughtful. And that's another thing, very quickly, I know, I shouldn't have said shut up, but...
Yeah, but it's just good.
It, it's very good, and I just, regardless of what you think happens, we're all really decent human beings, okay? We're all tax-paying residents, we all have children in the district, most of us. And things that are said in social media, just think before you post, because the way it comes across is, we're people, we're human too. So thank you very much again, and I will stop it there.
Can I, can I just say one?
I'm sorry, I'm getting all the feels here.
Since everyone's jumping in, I, I think part of the issue that we all were having is that no one was responding to anything we were saying or sending. So we were just feeling a little weird. So this, everything you just said, actually, I know it made me feel better. At least we feel like we're addressed.
Every, I, I did, I mean, I read them three times each. They're here, they're, they're in my blood, as is Mr., your laws. I, I keep, I read, I highlight, index, I'm an accountant, this is what I do. Sue, Lynn, you understand me? So, that's all.
And that is not Maroon.
It's not Maroon, no, 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 I love the Maroon at home. That's a CPA joke.
We wanted to, we wanted to know that we were being heard.
You're being heard.
Because this has been dragging on, not just for years, but even from between April and two weeks ago. Nothing was addressed, nothing was said. So we just needed to know that we were being heard, having clear...
All right. With no further business to discuss or comments received, can I please have a motion and a second to adjourn the meeting?
Motion.
Oh, let me just say this, on, on, because I'm, no. Just for clarification, whether it's on the November fifteenth agenda, it's not a public hearing. So it is for discussion.
By the board.
By the board.
Did we explain to us, Lynn, to a better...
Oh, it means that you're going to hear everything you have to say and sponsor everything that you have.
Yeah, it's not a back and forth, it's us.
But can they, can they, okay.
Can I have a motion and a second to adjourn the meeting?
Second.
I kept my answer.
All in favor?
All right.
Our next scheduled meeting is officially November fifteenth. In the meantime, Woodbury, you get to yourselves and each other.